The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Welcome, everyone, to council chambers. It's nice to see a nice, healthy crowd here tonight. I'll begin this evening with a roll call. Fran?
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natvig.
Present.
Tahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four on tonight's agenda is communications from citizens. But before we get into that, we have a swearing-in ceremony of three of our new firefighters from the Muscatine Fire Department. Gentlemen, please. I will begin the oath by asking you to raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
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 Very good. Not exactly in unison, but we got there, okay? Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
That was great harmony, three-part harmony. Very good, very good. Chief?
Get a better picture. Never, never seen a...
Very good. Colin, Ray, and Nate, if you'll introduce yourselves individually to council members. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for serving.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Colin.
Congratulations.
Thanks for serving.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
A very important part of our community is public safety, and the fire department is very well represented here tonight, so let's give all of our firefighters... Folks, I'm going to deviate just a little bit from the agenda tonight. In the consent agenda, which, if you've not picked up a copy of tonight's agenda, is an item called a proclamation. And this proclamation was initiated by the current Ms. Scott County, correct? Formerly Ms. Teen Muscatine. Anna, if you'll come to the podium here. I'm taking advantage of the fact that I am here right now. Anna's platform with regards to her reign is music, so I will let you say the rest.
Okay.
By the way, she is a lot taller than I am.
President Gerald Ford said, "Music education opens doors that help children pass from school into the world around them, a world of work, culture, intellectual activity, and human involvement. The future of our nation depends on providing our children with a complete education that includes music." I'm here tonight to ask you to recognize the importance of music education in the lives of students who live here in Muscatine. Children in school bands score 19% higher in English, 17% higher in mathematics, and use more of their brain than those without music education. Music encourages work ethic, collaboration, but perhaps most importantly, it actively engages students in healthy, positive activity benefiting the community as a whole. Thank you.
Very good. Anna, thank you.
Thank you.
And here is the proclamation which I've generated. Were you?
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, and still on item number four, communications. If there is anyone in council chambers tonight that has an issue or an item they would like to address council regarding that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come forward. Very good. We'll move on to item five, consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through C, item 9A, the filing of communications, 12A through G, and tonight's bill's totaling $1,019,953.59?
So moved.
Scott, in a second.
Second.
Second. Tom, any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Down to item seven. Proposed amendment number one to the city budget for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. This public hearing, by the way, item seven is public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed amendment number one to the city budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. This amendment includes amending both revenues and expenditures to the currently estimated amounts. Amendments include updated revenue estimates, updated capital project construction schedules, additional grant-funded projects, and other increased operating and capital outlay costs. Prior to any action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers who wishes to speak to this issue?
Move to close.
Motion to close, in a second.
Second.
Second. Bob? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item B, which comes with a presentation from our finance director, Nancy Leek, and our city administrator, Greg Monzager. Item B is, this public hearing concerns the proposed adoption of the city budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year 2014, 2015. The amounts included in the public hearing notice and budget adoption resolution reflect the budget amounts approved by city council during their budget review sessions and are in the format required by the state of Iowa. The final budget document must be filed with the state on or before March 15th of each year. Prior to any action by city council, a public hearing is required, and I think we'll allow Nancy to move forward at this time.
Thank you, mayor. During the budget discussions, we went through each fund, one by one, each enterprise fund and then the capital projects. At this time, we have a kind of a consolidation of all that information into an overview of the whole city budget. The first slide basically says our total operating and capital budget for next year is about $47.3 million. In total, revenues are $45,835,000. And since revenues are less than expenditures, we will be using some of the bond issue proceeds in this fiscal year for those expenditures. There's no new debt issues budgeted for the upcoming 14, 15-year. We'll be generating $12,541,000 in regular property taxes. The tax rate is $15.67 per thousand, which is the same rate as the current year.
Would you repeat that just one time, Nancy? The same rate as previous years?
It is the same rate as previous years. And there's a slide later on that will demonstrate that.
Oh, moving to follow. Great.
Yes. This overview is just where does the money come from? The total entity-wide money, and I'll kind of go clockwise. The main, one of the largest segments of revenue is property taxes, the $12,541,000. There's going around clockwise, some TIF taxes, about 2% of the total. Other city taxes, another 2%, that's hotel motel, utility franchise, cable franchise. Local option tax, $2,558,000, about 6% of the total. A new category this year for the first time is the commercial and industrial reimbursement from the state, and that's about $284,001% of the total. Other intergovernmental, that's other state and federal grants, some of our police grants, some are for the capital projects. A multitude of various intergovernmental revenues, the public housing funding is also in there. Road use taxes, about 5% of the total. Charges for services, about 29%, $13,381,000. And a lot of that is the charges in the city's enterprise fund, so sewer fees, garbage fees, landfill transfer station, transit, and various other fees. Smaller category, about 2% use of money in property, that's rents and interest. And other revenues of various combinations of things, $4.7 million, about 10%. So that's just an entity-wide of the total city budgeted revenues for next year. And how are those funds used entity-wide? And again, I'll try to do it clockwise. Public works, about $2.4 million, 5% of the total. Public safety, a larger part of the city functions, at 18%, 8.7 million for public safety. Community and economic development, about 3%. Culture and recreation, that's library, art center, and the various parks and rec activities, 3.184% or 7% of the total. Housing and urban renewal, 1.9 million, 4% of the total. That's the various housing programs of the city. General government, 5% of the total. Debt service, that's 8%. Enterprise funds, again, a large part of the city's budget, little over $15 million or 32% of the total. And then capital projects, it's $8.4 million for the upcoming year, which is 18% of the total. So again, that's entity-wide where the city's budget is divided between for expenditures. The city's tax levy, the largest part, just barely, is the general fund levy at the $8.10 per thousand rate. Smaller debt service, that's $2.89 per thousand. And then smaller amounts for levy improvements and tort liability, which is the insurance costs. Special revenue funds, $3.85, which is for general fund employee benefits. And then a smaller amount, again, for transit of .36 per thousand. So that, those in total equal the 15.67 total tax levy rate. And the slide that the mayor was jumping ahead to, this does show how the city's been able to maintain about the same property tax rate for five and almost six years. The six-year back was a little lower, but it's been pretty steady for a number of years, and that's very good. As shown there, the highest tax rate was in FY 07, '08 at the 1653, so it's significantly less, and we've been able to maintain that for a number of years now. And I'll segue into Greg now.
Greg, did you want to present from there or from the podium?
I'll do it right here. Thank you, mayor, your honor. I've been reminded that there's a certain game at eight o'clock, and since I did not graduate from that university, I'm going to be reading this verbatim rather than in concise format, and so...
I'll have plenty of questions.
So, good news. Tax rates will be the same for three years in a row, as Nancy just mentioned. Cities, but in order to do that, in order to maintain the tax rate, it's been a difficult task with increases in personnel costs, pension contribution, insurance, and a 5% reduction in commercial and industrial taxable property valuations. And we'll see another 5% reduction next fiscal year, or the following fiscal year. There's some discussion regarding increases and decreases in the levy rate on the next couple paragraphs, but I do think it's important to point out that we are using over $369,000 in general fund in lieu of increase in the city's tax rate. And that would amount to about .46 cents on the city's tax rate if we were to fund all employee benefits out of that levy. So, want to make sure and point that out. Also like to, and as I just mentioned, $369,000 out of the general fund balance is for employee benefits, with approximately 45% of those benefits for police and fire pension cost. We'd like to note that is not sustainable going forward, and as you know, the city council has adopted a resolution in support of promoting some type of change, so that discussion will continue with our legislatures. The individual levy rates, increases and decreases are noted under bullet point three. I'll let you read that yourself and jump to the next page. 2011, '12, we eliminated the emergency levy, and the emergency levy is, again, not included this fiscal year. With the city's proposed tax rate at $15.67, a home value at $100,000, given the rollback, we'll see a $25 increase annually. However, given the new rollback, down to 90%, excuse me, 95% from 100% of value, commercial properties will actually see $78 less when their value is $100,000. And of course, this reflects only the city's portion of the tax, property taxes collected. On the next page, you'll see a distribution of the combined tax dollars collected in the county of Muscatine. These are based on 13, 14 rates, as we don't have everybody's finalized, the school doesn't finalize until April. But you'll see where roughly 39%, the county's 38%, and the school is 20, nearly 20, or excuse me, the county's nearly 23% of the total property tax levy. Proposed budget has a general fund ending balance, as of June 30th, 2015, of 16.8%. Just slightly over our 16.7 minimum fund balance adopted recently by the city council. There's a history in the next bullet point, over the last five years of that fund balance, 16.8% in this year, 17% at the end of last fiscal year, although the original target was 15%. 17.9% in 2012, 2013, that's the year that we did budget and purchase a new fire engine and financial software using fund balance for one-time purchases, so there's a history there for your information. Again, this budget does continue city services at current levels. Budget includes funding for police and fire pensions at a contribution rate increasing to 30.41%, an increase of $32,588 over last year's increase of $235,000. Budget does allow for cost of living increase for union and non-union employees. However, as you all know, we have not finalized the union negotiations with all three unions at this point in time. There's only one small change in the general fund full-time equivalent positions, and that's .13 full-time position in the library staffing. General fund insurance costs have increased by just over $50,000 in fiscal year 14. This is the second year we've seen significant increases, but again, they're telling us this is based on market factors and not specific to the city's experience. Again, in 14, 15, this budget uses TIF funds to fund the city's economic development administrative costs, our contribution to the chamber, and you'll note that's, there has been $35,000, there's a $3,000 increase for hospitality, is the term we use. I have had that discussion with the chamber as well. So you will note, we're kind of paying ahead in that in November of next year, we'll be capturing $41,000 instead of $38,000 in debt to kind of backfill this year's increased amount. Budget continues subsidies to outside agencies, but it does continue them at their current rates, current levels, excuse me, and the CBB's budget or funding allocation remains at 25% for the coming fiscal year. And we do continue to fund contributions to the equipment replacement fund and computer replacement fund at equivalent, equivalent to the needs for next fiscal year. There's some good information on the following page. You know, we think we've positioned as a group effort here, the city, put the city in a good position for going forward, for challenges that we know exist, economic challenges, maintaining existing levels of services, positioning the city to meet new challenges, legislative challenges specifically, and shortfalls, potential shortfalls in revenue. We noted during the budget discussions that we took advantage of the utility franchise fee several years ago. We're currently at 1%. That can go up to 5%. That's a potential source of revenue that could offset lost revenue in other categories. Proposed budget is one that finds balance between overall city property tax rates, sufficient level, maintaining a sufficient level in the general fund balance, and providing the department with the resources and equipment needed to perform the functions of their departments efficiently and effectively. If you recall, back in fiscal year 13, was the first year, we included assigned funding in the budget, and for this next fiscal year, we have one item remaining, and that is a contribution towards the fourth year of the COPS grant. We've been putting funds aside each year to pay for that mandatory fourth year. Enterprise funds, for the city's enterprise funds, there are two increases. The city council adopted an increase in sewer collection and drainage fees some months back at 3%. There's supposed increase in golf fees as well that's included in the budget, dollar per round, with a corresponding increase in season pass fees as well. However, fees are not budgeted to increase in any other funds, including transfer station, landfill, refuse, transit, ambulance, airport, and parking. The landfills fund continues to make progress, and as you may recall, we'll be meeting this summer with the landfill committee to do a status update, and we'll bring that information back to the city council at that time, also to review the contracts that we have in place. Capital project summaries is on the following page. You'll note just shy of $8.5 million in capital projects for streets, sidewalks, sewer-related projects, water pollution control plant improvements, trail improvements, airport improvements, the downtown revitalization project that's underway, ambulance equipment, and library building improvements. These projects are funded through grants, local option sales tax, sewer reserve funds, and general obligation bond proceeds. Going forward, as we discussed during the budget review process, due to property tax legislation enacted in 2013, taxable valuations are projected to see minimal or negative growth over the next 10 years. Those projections, and working with PFM or in the next bullet point, you can see for the next 10 years, our average increase over the past 10 years has been about 2.5% growth annually on an average basis. The projected annual average increase over the next 10 years is .39%. So we've got some difficult tasks ahead of us next budget year and beyond. Our assumptions, our future assumptions, do assume that the state will maintain its backfill as part of the property tax legislation. Continuing on the final page, for fiscal year 2015 and beyond, we've noted police and fire pensions already are a significant cost to the city. 25-year projections show pension contribution rates of at least 27% through 2020, and then incremental decreases down to 20% by 2037. Of course, their IDOT or legislative rules may impact ATE revenues currently budgeted at $600,000. That $600,000 is budgeted in the police department presently. We mentioned utility franchise fees as an alternate source of revenue should the need arise, and tax increment financing. We are expecting the state to see legislation this legislative session as well. Certainly report back to council and any action or discussion that we need to have at that, at the appropriate time. And hopefully that was sufficiently short, your honor. But I do want to take two seconds and thank city staff, our department heads, and staff, especially Nancy and her work in putting the budget together. They've done an excellent job, again, for this next fiscal year. And I certainly would like to thank you, the mayor and council, in working with us in our budget review sessions and bringing forward what I think is a good budget that maintains city services and puts us in a strong position going forward.
Very good. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Nancy. Just a reminder, folks, this is a public hearing, so now would be the time for anyone in council chambers that wishes to speak to this issue. Again, it's a public hearing, now is the time to come forward. Motion to close, Osama, second.
Second.
Second. Scott, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Moving down to item 11, from the city administrator, 11A, which is a resolution approving amendment one to the 2013, 2014 city budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second. Tom, any additional discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette. This is a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item B, which is a resolution adopting the budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, additional discussion, council? Also a roll call vote, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution adopting and approving tax compliance procedures relating to tax-exempt bonds. The state of Iowa and Internal Revenue Code have regulations for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds. The city's Bond Council is recommending the city formally adopt the procedures and practices in connection with the issuance of tax-exempt debt. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? So moved, Your Honor. Tom? And a second?
Second.
Second. Was that you, Mike?
Please.
Okay, and any discussion? And a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution authorizing changes to the Section Eight Administrative Plan. The Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand and fourteen includes funding for housing assistance and program administration for the Section Eight program. The current policy requires an interim reexamination should family income increase between annual reexaminations. As an administrative cost-saving measure, staff recommends conducting only annual income reviews and discontinuing the interim reexaminations for income increases. Staff is recommending the resolution be adopted to allow implementation of the revisions effective March sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? So moved, Your Honor. Scott? And a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil? Any discussion, council? A roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing for a West Cellular Tower lease extension at Greenwood Cemetery. In nineteen ninety-three, the city of Muscatine entered into an agreement to host a cellular tower at the cemetery. The tenant who is renting the West Tower, or Tower Co., two thousand and thirteen LLC, is interested in extending the lease time period to two thousand and forty-three. The city would continue to receive ten percent increases for each renewal period. With the amended lease, the city will receive twenty-five percent of the gross lease payments from all additional tower renters. Before any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second. Tom, any discussion? Roll call, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Going down to item F, a request presented for city council's consideration, is a request from the Fire Department for the issuance of a purchase order for an ambulance refurbishment project. The Fire Department has been refurbishing ambulances instead of purchasing new ones. A refurbishment consists of removing the box from the old chassis and replacing it with the new ambulance chassis. The chassis was purchased from Krieger's in the amount of twenty-eight thousand fifty dollars. The only bid received from, was from Foster Coach in the amount of seventy thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total refurbishment cost of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. There is ninety-nine thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Was Bob, and a second?
Second.
Second. Osama, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve a pilot program for outdoor dining on public right-of-way. This proposed program is being done to assist the city's certification as a Blue Zone Project community and to further implement a number of goals from the comprehensive plan. The aim of this program is twofold. First, is to promote the use of public right-of-way for outdoor dining in places where it is currently permitted, and the second is to conduct trial outdoor dining on platforms placed on on-street parking spaces. Based on the experiences of the pilot program, a decision to allow dining on platforms placed on-street parking spaces and how they should be regulated will be made in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? So moved, Your Honor. Phil, and a second?
My second.
Second. Scott, and discussion, council?
One, one question, Your Honor. The picture that you have on here shows that some of the dining is going to be on the street itself, instead of just the sidewalks. Is that correct?
One of the proposed pilot programs will be in, in the right-of-way and city parking spaces on a raised platform. We'll make sure that there's adequate safety for pedestrians and those using, certainly using the platform, but yes.
How many of these platforms do we think that they're going to possibly use?
Well, there'll be just one platform as part of this project, and it is just a pilot program to see how it works, what the issues are that come up, and then we'll be able to bring back any, any suggestions or changes or code changes that we need to make to see if it's a program we think is worth continuing. How many spaces that they're taking up?
Oh, I thought it was just one. Yeah, but...
There are more than one space.
Oh, okay.
Council calls Andrew Fingman to the stand.
The one that it's on space, it's the two spaces in front of Booney's over on Iowa and Avenue. And to kind of give you a sense of the interest, we opened up this pilot program to all the restaurants downtown, and through the Blue Zones Committee, letters went out to all the downtown restaurants, and so this is the response we got in the pilot program, so it kind of gives you at least, starting out with the level of interest is in that, so. I would anticipate maybe eventually more, but I don't think we're going to see a ton.
Very good. Anyone else have questions for Andrew?
Well, I just, with this implementation being done here, is it the time to take all the meters out of downtown?
Put new meters in?
I like that question. I'm just asking a question here, that's all.
Sorry, not related to this particular project, I know there's, there's probably two sides to that.
Well, when you start going to taking spaces off the park in there, I mean, yeah, makes the remaining spaces more valuable.
That's true.
It increases the church.
I'm sure that question is beyond Andrew's level of authority to respond to, so perhaps...
I, I just put the question out here for debate later on, maybe.
Is that because of the number of tickets that someone may receive in the downtown area, Osama?
You never know.
Andrew, while you're up there, I have one question, that example, the picture, do you happen to know what city that was in?
I want to say that was in West Palm Beach, Florida. I know they were doing other areas around here, but that was the best picture I could find at the time.
But you can see an example when weather improves, right in Iowa City. What street is that on, Randy, you know, off the top of your head?
It's...
Part of Mickey's.
I couldn't find, I couldn't find a decent picture of that, so that's why...
That's okay. But there is, but there is one in Iowa City, if you want to take a look at it, and then...
Oh. Here's a couple of, I'll pass these on to council, these are from Cedar Rapids. Thank you.
Council, any other questions for Andrew?
Does the company rent the space, or how do you account for the money that you lose on the parking meters?
Not, not during the pilot program. You know, that's part of the reason we're having a pilot program, they're responsible for the platform and the cost of the platform, but those are certainly things that will be brought back in the fall for your consideration.
And one of the things, you'll be able to see how that impacts parking revenue and things like that, that's why I'm doing it as a pilot program this, this first year.
Anyone else? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to declare vehicles as surplus property. Staff is requesting the recommended vehicles and equipment to be determined as surplus to allow for their proper disposal. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? So moved, Your Honor. Scott?
Second.
Second. Osama, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve establishment of no parking in alley between East Eighth and or East Ninth Street off of Sycamore Street. The Police Department and Building and Zoning Staff have been called to this location on numerous occasions to deal with vehicles parked in the alley and blocking access to garages and driveways. It is the Traffic Committee's recommendation the no parking in alley signs be posted at this location. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? So moved, Your Honor. Tom, and a second?
Second.
Second. Osama, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Down to item fourteen, communications from council members, and we'll begin with Councilman Rieb.
Please, Mr. Mayor, I think the mayor and council should write personal letters to each of Randy's frontline snow folks who have been out there nights after night after night, weekend after weekend after week. Was it Snowfall number twenty-six? Twenty-five. And to thank them for their efforts and to tell them we've noticed what they're doing and appreciate it greatly.
It's a record, right? Record snowfall?
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
I have nothing, thank you.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob? Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
And Councilman Tom?
I would like to echo Greg's comments and thank the city staff for all the hard work on the budget. I know it's a monumental task, and I think that they did a great job coming in at our sixteen point seven percent target. And I'd also like to congratulate Nancy on her new job as compliance officer.
And Fran has a brand-new grandson.
Okay. Greg? Greg, you're on.
I just have one real quick item tonight, Your Honor. Many of you may know Howard Anderson, who is our maintenance person here at City Hall and the library. His last day is tomorrow, he is retiring. Howard has been responsible for redoing much of the woodwork here in City Hall on his own. I think he's done an excellent job, look forward to that project continuing under new staff, but just want to congratulate Howard and thank him for his efforts here at City Hall.
Very good. Fran?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, and my only comment is to thank Councilman Fitzgerald for filling in for me while I enjoyed two weeks' vacation in Florida. Is there any other business, council? Your motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion by Osama, and meeting is adjourned.
Whole lot of paper sign-in.
Jeez.